Let's take that up during agenda planning. Um, let's move to the next topic. Middle school French textbook, Dr. Carabella.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members and Dr. Jones and the community members that are still with us. We have prepared a narrated PowerPoint for use that will present the process that was used to determine which new French textbook we would purchase for our middle schools. Maybe we won't have the sound.
Do you mind if we just start asking questions?
I have no problem. If you have questions, please feel free to ask them.
Okay, I mean, go ahead. Who wants to go first? Karen, go ahead.
So Dr. Kilbo, I have a question and it goes to the expense of this. I see that there's a total for a three-year license is the $40,000. How does this get broken down into our budget? Is this paid on an annual basis that we split this out for over the course of three years or is it a one-time expense?
I have to defer to Adrian, but I believe that it's a one-time expense if we pay for it upfront.
Okay, and then what happens after three years?
And then we have to renegotiate what the cost would be as we do with any kind of textbook that we use that's online.
And what are we using now for the sixth, seventh and eighth grade French classes?
Adrienne, can you answer that question, please?
Sure thing. We're currently using a text called Discovering French Today, and that was a license that we've had for the last five years. But the book is going out of print in December and the digital will phase out afterwards if it doesn't get taken over by another company. But the book is definitely going out of print in December.
Okay, and is this so forgive me if this is somewhere in this, but I didn't see it. Is there an actual textbook or is this all online, like physical, like I get to walk around with a book?
So it's, so there's both. There, each student could have access to a digital license, hence the cost. And we, in the proposal, I had included a class set for each middle school, so 25 hard copies for each middle school of level one and 25 copies for each middle school of level two.
Okay, and then from the, from the process, I mean, I read the student responses and I thought for the most part, they really, they really enjoyed it. I was just curious as to how many students participated in the review? And was it a broad landscape over all sixth, seventh and eighth grade classes?
So that's a great question. So yes, we purposefully surveyed students. We chose, each of our friends, French teachers chose a grade level. So, so each grade level, well, not that each grade level at each middle school was surveyed, but all grade levels were covered across the three middle schools. So sixth grade was surveyed at one middle school, whereas seventh grade was surveyed at another and eighth grade. So we did have a really nice sampling of the three grade levels. And it's too bad the audio is not working because we have some student, some really nice student video in the, in the presentation.
I was, I was gonna say, don't worry about it because this is just a first read, so we could all watch it afterwards. And then when it comes back, we'll have that between the next two board meetings.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if you send it, I'll, I, well, I can't commit for everyone else, but I will watch it. Because I'd like to see it. The only other question I had is what is the timeline for putting this out into the classroom? Is this something that is being looked at for the 2022, 23 year?
Yes, so we would purchase it when the budget opens in July. And it is, it is a one-time expense that brings us through three years. The company also sells a five-year license. That is a one-time cost, so the longer the license, the more cost effective it is. They sell it in one, three and five years, but I was just trying to be conservative in what, what we think we can afford based on the, the budget that we're looking at for next year. So the three years seem to be the most realistic.
Understood. And I lied, I had one other question. From a teacher's perspective, did the, and I didn't necessarily see this in the teacher's comments, but does the, does the materials come with enough information to help teachers formulate how they should, that will help them to structure the class going forward so that the teachers feel like they have adequate tools with this textbook and resources to create a high level of French literacy for their students?
Yes, absolutely. That is one of the reasons why this textbook outshined all of the other competitors. There are, for example, pre-AP listening activities that prepares students for that ultimate AP French experience should they elect to go as far as that in language study. Our high school teachers, a couple of our high school French teachers were part of this process and definitely thought that that was a benefit and the textbook, the program comes with so much more than we've ever had access to before with other programs. There's, there's an iVideo, there's iNews, there's songs, the resources are updated. News articles are updated weekly, videos are updated monthly. There are e-readers. There's so much that is of high interest to teenagers today to make lang, language learning more fun than maybe we thought about it when we were kids and just studying, you know, grammar, drill and kill. It's a very, it's a very different approach and it's in line with the actual standards and what, and where we're, where the, where world language study is moving. We're moving away from drill and kill and moving toward learning language, not learning about language, but learning how to use language.
That's exciting because I took four years of French and then another year in college and I can't speak at all because I was under the drill and kill model and it doesn't teach you a language.
Yes, I, I, I agree with that.
Thank you. It's been very helpful. I appreciate the answers.
Ms. Downey?
Yes, I just want to follow up. Just in terms of our French enrollment, it feels like 25 books per middle school per, per level feels like it might not be enough. I don't know if you want to just talk about the French enrollment and I'm assuming that this means we teach levels one and two in the middle school. When you said there's digital access for three and four, we're not teaching three and four till they get to the high school. Is that correct?
That is correct. So, uh, level one takes you from six through most of seventh grade because sixth grade French is scheduled on a pattern day. So every other day. And then French two is what our eighth graders engage in. And, and yes, French three and four would begin at the high school. The nice feature about this book is in terms of differentiation, we have access to all four levels, at least digitally. So if there is a child, like every so often we'll have like a native French or heritage French speaker in a class who's in eighth grade, they can get, they can be given access to the French three level if that is linguistically where they are. In terms of the having enough books, our teachers would actually, they would tell you that they would even need less than that. That is actually a generous number. They'll say that they only need a handful because there are some students who obviously like need that tactile connection to paper. But I was trying to at least shore us up with a class set at each school.
Great, thank you.
Michael Joseph.
Thanks. The, we, I will, I will watch the, the video as well. Obviously, I appreciate the time to put into that. And I agree, the, if that can come out to the board ahead of time, so we can like flip the board meeting, I think it'd be helpful if we had, quite frankly, if we had done that with the, if the consultants on the field had been able to do that, that we could have gotten right to the conversation and that might have, you know, then we might have been able to stick to the half an hour that we had actually budgeted for that on the agenda. But I appreciate, you know, I looked through all the, the French documentation. I really appreciate the process and like we said, the input of students, I have no reason to question the judgment of the process. It sounds like a great program. Dr. Carabella, my, my only question on your end is like, which is kind of the question I always have when, when these textbook adopters come up is why, why French? Why, why now? Is, is this part of the cycle? Was it French? It was there, is there a textbook adoption cycle where French, it was time for French to come up? Oh, is it because the book came out, is going out of print and we had to move more quickly? What brought this up to the agenda now? And how is it budgeted? How does it exist in our budget?
It is, the reason it was brought up now is because the licensing for the current textbook is going to no longer be available to us. So that's why it came up now. And Adrian does have some funds in the budget for next year for textbooks. And then we also have some at the district level to be able to support the, the replacement of the French textbooks.
And just adding to that response, in addition to the book going out of print, our subscription to Discovering French Today, which is what we're using currently, our subscri, our actual subscription to it is expiring as well. So it was sort of like a fortuitous time where it's expiring and they're expiring.
So just one more question, or at least for me. Um, like Big Ideas Math, which I guess we're already talking about in a second, could this take you into the high school? I should know this because I, as my son is studying for his French test, but I don't think, do they have books in the high school? I don't think they do.
So we, we don't know, no one language class lives in a French textbook. There is no magic potent that's packaged in a book. We do use a book for resources, particularly for the videos, the songs, news articles and like that. Yes, this book goes up to four levels, which is why the member, our high school teachers who are on the committee really liked this particular resource. So yes, absolutely. And we would hope that not for, not for this coming year, but the following, so 23, 24, we could adopt, we could bring this to the high school.
So you could then buy like you're saying, like for a AP, like then you'll, right?
Buy.
To add-ons.
Right, we can buy the license for, well, we have access to all four levels. We would have access to all four levels now and our high school teachers for this coming year could get teacher access to all four levels and pilot it with their students. It's just that our high school students for this coming year wouldn't yet have their own digital license.
Right.
But the teacher could use it, you know, projecting videos and songs from a smart board and, you know, for more whole class activities and instruction.
And that's the other reason Kathleen is that the resources are so rich that the teachers at the high school could use them next year. And especially the ones that really make it more interactive so that the students are learning the language of French and not just doing the drill and kill. So that's why they were excited about it and it will be a smooth transition if that's what we are able to do moving forward.
That's, I like that idea. Kind of like the Big Ideas Math concept. I like the flow. Yes, Karen.
Having been on this committee and having much like Ms. Kowalski taken French all through high school and into college, and I can say a few phrases. But I, I will say, having looked at a bunch of the presentations, I will say, I know I missed one of them, but much like, you know, Adrian had mentioned and Dr. Carabelle as well. This one really stood out. It was very engaging. It's very hard for students, especially when they're starting to learn French at the middle school level to, to keep their, them engaged and interested, especially when they can't understand the language because they're still learning it. But all of the resources that were included in this one, because we, we did get a presentation on some of that, it was, were, were highly engaging and I know it kept, kept my interest. And, you know, but I, I, and I think that that was well said. I'm sure it probably is in the presentation that we couldn't hear sharing some of those points, but you know, this one did stand out in, in that regards. I can't speak to the actual teaching of the language because I learned in the drill and kill model and this was just very, very different. But, you know, that, that was just my feedback from having watched several of the presentations.
Well, like I said, this will come back to us. This was a first read, so we can all watch the video in between. And with that, merci.
And bonsoir.
That's it. That's all I got. Okay. Moving to action items. Thank you so much. Sorry. Thank you, Adrian. Thanks, Ann. Moving to action items, Policy Governance Committee, Ms. Downey.
Okay, good thing you're not taking that French test. Okay, I'm gonna
Doesn't go well with my accent?
Start the discussion. I'm gonna make a motion that the board adopt policy 5145.44 as presented.
Is there a second for that? Ms. Kowalski, thank you. I have a second. Go ahead and miss back to you, Ms. Downey.
The motion is that the board adopt policy 5145.44 in the form presented this evening. As you all know, the board looked, took up adoption of the policy at our January meeting. It did not pass. Even, it had been read two preceding times prior to then. So as a result, it went back to Policy Governance Committee. So in as much as the policy's been before the board on three separate occasions, we can take it up as an action item this evening. Subsequent to that January meeting, PGC evaluated what revisions could be made to the policy, which would be both compliant with the requirements of Title IX and the implementing regulations and which a majority of the board would approve for adoption. This review took place over several committee meetings and involved us looking at policies utilized by other districts in Connecticut. Additionally, we consulted with council who's advised us that the version before us tonight for voting is compliant. The language in this policy, it derives from the Cabe suggested model policy and is similar to that in Darien, Stanford and Fairfield, just to name a few school districts that we looked at. In addition to this policy, we do have policies in place already relating to non-discrimination and bullying, which protect our students. Furthermore, there are detailed regulations for implementing the policy, which are already on our website. Just to be clear, the policy provides protection to all of our students under Title IX. Even in the absence of this policy, under the law, the students would have those protections. Simply stated, the need to have a board policy came to us. As a result, federal, because federal regulations were passed in August 2020 requiring that recipients of federal financial assistance, which we, we do, it was a requirement that we pass a policy that we are going to recognize and abide by Title IX's provisions. So the law already is in place. This is merely as a result of the regulations. So with that, I will turn it over to perhaps my other PGC colleagues if they would like to make any comments.
Sorry, Karen.
Thanks. Christina, well, well, well said. And I really don't have a whole lot more to add and some of this may seem a little redundant on, on your comments. I just wanted to add that first of all, through the thoughtful and thoroughness of the PGC, we did look at this at several, at several angles and used and looked to the advice of our outside counsel, the same outside counsel that had opined on the policy that was originally presented late last year. This policy is in compliance with Title IX and goes no further for which we did not need to do or was prescribed by law, which was confirmed by our outside counsel. I believe this policy is not only consistent with other districts within the state of Connecticut, but it is also follows the standards that have been prescribed by Cabe. And with that, I think that this board should take this, this policy and on vote tonight, pass it.
Ms. Hirsch, do you have anything to add?
Well, I was gonna say, I think most of this has been covered by my two colleagues on PGC. But, you know, again, as it was said, I know questions were asked in advance and, you know, Ms. Downey has addressed the fact that this covers all of our students. Whether there is certain language in there or not, I think Ms. Kowalski has also done a deep dive and also shared some of her thoughts after PGC. And the fact is, is that, you know, this covers the letter of the law. It is very specific. This follows also the Cabe policy models that we have used for all of our other policies. And, you know, we, we chose to go slightly different route the first go around, but this one really is more in line with every single other policy that we, we have and have had drafted. So, and again, it is what was adopted by the majority of districts in the, that are, that are Cabe districts within Connecticut because we, we did research, a lot of research. So, much like my colleagues, I would hope that the board supports this so that we can have this in place for our students. You know, as of, as of tonight.
Sounds good. So, motion on the table. Seeing nothing else. All in favor? Okay, one piece. Laura, are you raising your hand? Okay, passes. Yep, I see her. All right, passes eight zero. Thank you. Well done, PGC. I know that took some time. We appreciate it. Okay, next action item, math textbook. I'm just going to put it on the table. The motion is approve recommended math textbook, Big Ideas, Learning Algebra, Geometry and Algebra II as presented. Can I get a second? Ms. Downey? Sorry, I looked right. All right. Who's this? Dr. Carabella? Anything else?
No, I'm just thrilled that you're voting on it tonight and I can't wait to hear your answer.
Ms. Downey?
Ann, I don't see any cost estimate on the last page in the costs. And I think we asked that last month, so I don't feel comfortable voting on it without a cost.
It, the cost is in there. Andrew, would you like to share the cost again, please? I don't have it in front of me.
It is, it was, it was included. There was a link in there that was an additional document. We, we mentioned that at the last meeting when this was presented. Yeah, that's, it was, yeah. And we went over at the last, at last meeting was the, the costs.
I'm here now. I'm happy to talk to it if you'd like.
No, she's fine. She sees it now. Are you good? All right, motion on the table. By a show of hands, how do you vote on this? And that passes eight zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And your students will thank you.
Okay, next is the financial and staffing report. Let me get the motion on the table. Motion to financial report for period ended March 31st, 20, sorry. My motion is to authorize financial report for period ended March 31st, 2022. Can I get a second? Ms. Downey? Okay. Sean?
Good evening, everybody. I thought I would just, before I start, chime in on the discussion of the French math book. A French math book, a French book. And I heard that, you know, we would, to take advantage of the pricing, we'd have to pay upfront. I mean, we, we could very well do that, but we could recognize the expense year by year. So that's something that if it fits better within the budget or we could take advantage of better pricing by going through the five-year license, that might be worth looking at. Okay, to the March financials. So as of March 31st, our year-to-date expense is 117.8 million or 67% of the full year budget. On a year-to-year basis, our year-to-date spending this year is up $7.8 million or 7.1%. The drivers of the $7.8 million increase, salaries are up 1.8 or 1.9% year-to-year, which is in line with the, the budgeted increase. Services are up 4.2 million or 31.3%. Two areas there, transportation is up, one due to the contractual rate and the second reason being that compared to last year, we've processed more invoices than last year. Sped tuition is up as well, and that's consistent with what we're saying as far as our year-end projection goes. Supplies are up 1.6 million or 60%, and I've mentioned this in previous, previous months. So residual year-to-year effect of the reduced level of spending in full year 21 associated with the pre-spend activity in the year before. So as far as the overall year-end projection goes, we're continuing to identify savings. In fact, we identified about $40,000 of transportation savings today. So we're, we're, we're making headway day by day. So we're still looking for savings to offset the projected overrun in, in the sped tuition line. So we do have a limited freeze in place, so every day is helping to identify those savings. Any, so anything, anything, any new spend now has to come in to me for an expense exception request. On the capital side, we had a very good month in terms of spending down the capital available balances. The total available balance is now down to 21.8. That's for all years. So down three and a half million dollars in the month. Full year, the full year 22 projects were down 2.2 million and the older projects, so pre-22 were down another 1.2. So since we really started putting a full court press on the closing out the projects, which was about September of 2020, our pre-22 available balances have come down by about $20 million or about 69% of the balance back in September. Included in the pre-22 balance are four building projects. I've mentioned this on previous months. New Lab, Glenville, Mesa and Hamilton Avenue with the current available balance of 2.5. Once the state closes those projects out, one, the money gets released. So as a, as is reflected by these numbers where there's a continued focus on, on closing out the projects, especially from full year 21 and prior. School lunch, continuing to see low cash sales relative to budget and relative to pre-COVID years. We are, and as, as I mentioned this before, we're seeing very strong reimbursements from the state. And given, given our track record to date, I now believe that we have a good shot at closing the year on total revenue slightly above budget, which is, would be really good news. So we'd be able to overcome the miss in the cash sales by strong state reimbursement. And then finally, expenses are currently projected to come in slightly under budget. So we took a look at the run rate for the salaries and we think will be slightly under budget. So, so revenue, we're hoping that we'll be achieving it or slightly better and expense will be slightly under. So school lunch is, is, is looking pretty good right now. Any questions?
Ms. Kowalski.
Hey, Sean. So my questions relate to the S R two and S R three. If we turn to S R two, there are a handful of new changes or new changes, handful of changes.
All right, let me talk to that. So. So in the February report, we did not have any town allocation of benefits for both S R two and an A R P for the full year 22. The guidance we had received was that we did not need to allocate town benefits for those for for full year 22, but we did need to allocate monies for 23 and 24. Since then, we've gotten an update, and we did need to increase town allocation of benefits for full year 22 in both S R two and the A R P. So in order to contain that, it's about $450,000. We've had to offset in other places in in the in the in the years in in both S R two and and A R P. And ultimately, where where these monies came out of was the P P E that we had in full year 23. So we were able to contain the additional insurance by reducing the estimate we had for full year 23 for P P E, which was a high-level estimate.
Okay, so but if I look at last month versus this month's, we have for full year 2022, there was no allocation for $20,259 for supplies. And now we have that in there. That doesn't fall within your explanation as to the benefits component?
Right, that is basically a reclass. There's a is an amount almost equal to that $20,000 down below. I think it was in a facility supplies line or P P E, and that got reclassed up to that $20,000. So basically, it's a it's just a movement from one line to another in the sheet.
Okay, then I also noticed that there's a new entry under teaching and learning for 20, full year 2022. Classroom libraries, learning loss K through two, there's a $211,000 expense that wasn't there last month?
Yeah, it was that in A R P?
S R two.
So S R two, we had a line called Classroom Learning, and I think it was called GEO. It got renamed to Classroom Supplies, Learning Loss. And it basically moved it from S R two to A R P in the sheets. So that was just a movement in the overall, I guess, in the year.
Okay, and then for the 5.0 social workers from ARP in it, full year 23 to full year 24, that went down from 413,000 to 338,000. What accounts for that change?
That one is a, so we did that as part of the, you know, the overall containing the the movement of the classroom supplies and the insurance in S R two. And so we did reduce a social worker by 74,000. We we need to take that out of another account in in A R P. We need to balance that out. We did not do that yet. So there's there's also money in the in the facilities P P E in full year 23. I think there's about 284,000 left. We'll have to offset that in the April report for, I think it's 74,000.
So you're saying it'll go back up to 413,000? You're just reallocating it from somewhere else? I'm not following that.
The the you're talking about the social worker number?
The social worker number, right? There's a difference. Sorry, I didn't do the math, but the last month's was 413,000, and this month it's 338,000.
Yeah, we'll have to move 74,000 out into social worker in in full year 23 from full year 22.
So you're going to take that money from our or S R three and put it into S R two?
No, the other way. We're taking 74 out of S R two, social worker, moving it into A R P, social worker, 74,000, and then so that it all balances, we'll take $74,000 out of the full year 23 P P E.
Okay, and I see that in S R three, you've taken out a significant amount from the P P E that went down from 726 to 284. And I assume that's in connection with the benefit issue that you mentioned.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so in full year 2022 for S R three, there's a category of teaching and learning that moved from 344,000 last year to 555,000 this month.
Say that again, which?
Sure, so it looks like in teaching and learning from last month was for full year 2022 was 344, 508,000 versus this time around, it's 555, 792,000.
I'm not seeing that number. Can you can you send me an email, and I'll look at it tomorrow?
Sure, I will. I would just. This is what I continue to talk about with respect.
Karen, I think that's actually the total for the category all below it. If you look at it, it's like all the stuff that's on the next page.
Yeah, that's what.
And that 211, which came in, changed the numbers.
I get that, but that was the total number for last year was three, last month was 344,000.
Right, and so now this month is more because you added the 211 for the classroom libraries.
It's the movement. It's the sum, the 555 is the sum.
The teaching and learning number is the sum of all the things below it. And when you added 211, it increased what the category is.
Understood, but that 211 is still under S R two as well.
No, it moved out of it. That was his point.
Under, oh, I see what you're saying.
And that's that's the exact difference. Very good, Christina. That's the exact difference.
I mean, we're we're going to continue to see some small moves here and there because, you know, the numbers that are in for full year 23 and 24 are, you know, estimates at this point. So it will be continued to be changes, and when we make those changes, we'll have to synchronize it with what we have in the E-grant system.
And how and how do these changes, how is this being affected with respect to the audit processes that's currently going on by the state? And the fact that we have to go back to the state at some point for approval of this, because it has changed since we submitted our original application last August?
Yeah, the state knows that changes will be made. I mean, you know, when we submitted this first round of it in August, there have been multiple multiple iterations, and every district's doing it. Because when they had to submit a baseline in August, you know, no one could possibly know how much we're going to end up spending by year. Each of these lines, a lot of estimates are in place. So for full year 22, if we estimated we would spend on a salary, you know, $80,000, and it ended up being 75,000, then we've got 5,000 left. So that means we did we have to pick up 5,000 somewhere else.
I'm happy to see that the P P E number is reducing, because hopefully that's a good sign of the future. Ms. Downey, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit about our freeze and our sped out-of-district tuition and kind of where we're sitting for the year and how we're going to manage to to. I know you said you're finding money on, you know, finding costs, but but, you know, we're in the hole. It sounds like a fair amount, so I'm just kind of curious, because it is now April, and we have two months left, how we're going to manage that. Not to put you on the spot, Sean, but I'm putting you on the spot.
No, it's okay. No, I mean, I've been calling out the exposure for months now. You know, in fact, at the beginning of the year, we projected that we would, you know, overrun our our budget of $7.3 million by 500, that we would come in at 7.8 for this year. That was the beginning of the year. And in fact, our budget submission for 22, 23 was flat at 7.8. So the fact that we now believe that the 7.8 million dollar projections at the beginning of the year is now likely to come in at close to 8.4 right now. So, you know, we've got more of an exposure, not only this year, but also potentially for next year. And we have already identified, you know, more than half of this exposure. As I said, we identified another 40,000 today in transportation. So we're continuing to work it. As I said, we have an expense freeze in place, so nothing gets encumbered without coming to me first. And and the whole your whole intent of this this limited freeze process is to slow down spending, and it's working.
But are we short, like, are we short, what are we shortchanging? You know, when you talk about the freeze, what's, can just give some examples of what's being frozen? Just so we understand the impact of that on, you know, staff and students.
Well, I mean, if it's something like there's a field trip, I let those go. If it's, you know, something that has to be done facilities-wise or in special ed, they they get approved. What I won't approve is I did get one request for a new coffee maker in a principal's office, and I and I said no. Things like that.
I remember in the past, and they like the funds at each school, sometimes you reduce that, right? I remember you guys did that last year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So I believe I believe we'll close this gap.
Sorry. Joe?
Sean, we spoke yesterday about some of these things you had to speak about again today. So basically, what we should probably think to do, and just a suggestion, is when you have a delta month-to-month, that maybe you include an explanation, so you don't have to keep re-explaining it time and time again. I hate to have put that through you through that yesterday, and then you have to explain it again today. So maybe take a look at stuff when you have a a significant delta, just have a little column where you could explain it, so you don't have to keep re-explaining it. Just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Karen Hirsch?
Great suggestion, Joe, actually. Always the one with the good ideas. Mine is a little less on the the I knew it did. Mine is a, oh, sorry, as as does, you know, Mike. But so I have a quick question. It's not about the specific numbers on funds, but I see, you know, we we have on the last page, you know, I think we've asked this question before, and maybe now's not the night to go over it, but we have funding over the next three years for the school climate consultant. I don't know what the school climate consultant is actually doing, per se, and would really like to have an understanding of that. We also have money in the budget for the next three years for a family and community engagement consultant. You know, it's such an important work that they're doing. I really love to see, especially, I mean, if we can get an update on, you know, from the consultants as to what they're doing and how that's positively impacting our students and staff within our schools. Just I know it's not it's not budgetary, but it's just a maybe we could talk about that when we get to agenda planning, because it's in here. But I'd love to have an information as to what what they're actually doing. Not sure if tonight's if this is the place to have that discussion, or if we should just put it on the agenda at some point.
Michael Joseph?
We talked, we talked a little bit about this last month to Joe's point and to Karen's point. I think it's worth as a as a board, thinking about the structures we have in place as far as the the oversight of S R and how and how and how the money is being being allocated. We know that the regulations for S R are different than than the regular budget cycle. I get that the board's role in S R, and S R, it says that in the in the legislation, stakeholders are supposed to be consulted, and that obviously includes the includes the board. I know there have been conversations at the finance committee level. We haven't had a conversation at the full board level in a while. If you think about how we approach, as I've been thinking about this, and we had some conversations, it's been, if you think about how we approach this from a at the the regular traditional budget, there's two different conversations we have. There's the conversation that we have before we vote on the budget as far as, you know, the intended allocation. And then there's this report, which is then how the money is actually spent. And and I think some of the, I don't want to say frustration, but I think some of the 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 challenge of the S R conversations that we've been having over the last couple of months has been because we've been conflating those two. And I think we need to have those two different apper, apper, we need to have an apparatus for both in place. So, for example, I know this audit is coming up. They, I think the deadline got extended, bringing that audit, the results of that audit to the full board's report on the expenditure makes sense. I think so does Joe's comment. There's some kind of apparatus in this report every week, every month, so that we we, you know, the Karens of the world don't have to go through line by line and see the changes. But if there's a way to track at a general level some of those big deltas or additional lines and move some S R two to S R three on the report, that could also make sense as an allocation. I think that's would would help would help our the transparency. And then on the and then on the allocation side, you know, we are talking about fiscal year 23 and fiscal year 24 expenditures. It is appropriate that we as a board have a conversation about and 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 receive the administration's thoughts on how that money is meant to be allocated, just like we do for the budget. I know it's a different approval process, but I think that conversation makes sense and how, you know, to have certainly, just like we do on the budget, as far as how the allocation is intended for for future years. Because this is a, obviously, it's a sensitive topic, but also this money was 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 given. It's a one-time thing. There's a lot of community interest in it, and the stakes are high. We've all seen all the headlines on 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 learning loss and the results of COVID and social emotional challenges and things. And and it behooves us to have more regular conversations about about the plans moving forward and how they're being allocated.
Thanks. Ms. Koston? Oh, you told me she had her hand up, Karen. Okay, okay, well, that's fine. Okay. Um, that makes sense, some of that. Okay. Cody, do you have anything? No?
I think everything he said makes sense.
Okay, that's fine. Ms. Kowalski?
I appreciate Mike's comments. I mean, I've, I think several on the board, including Sean and Dr. Jones, know how much I've been frustrated in trying to understand this additional spending. It is $14 million that has come into this district that I feel that this board has had little to no oversight or real voice in saying how this money is getting allocated and how it's getting allocated. And I think the community is owed some transparency as to where it's going and how it's being spent. And I appreciate the line items, but, for example, if we're adding, you know, one psychologist, where is that going? Are they covering all 15 schools? I think it would be helpful to, and what I keep asking for is it, as we have with respect to our own budget, right? Each school is out, we show what we're spending at each school for certain aspects of it. And for example, I still don't know what supplies are. And no one's been able to answer that question. I realize it's $3,000, but the question is, what is everything else? And how is it being spent across and is it going to all the schools? Is it going to a few of the schools? I know some of these allocations are only going to the Title I schools. And I'm not, I don't think that has any clarity in this particular document to let the community know that some of these funds that are being contributed here are not actually hitting their school. And I think that's important to know. And that's why I think that this information is is cursory at best. And I know I've spent hours on the phone trying to figure all of that out, but everyone in the community doesn't have hours to figure that out. And it needs to be understood that what they have communicated in the town halls as to what they think this money should have been spent for with the schools is being done. And how is it being done? They spent, we had town halls where people talked and voiced their concerns with respect to the academic loss that was that their their children were experiencing. Question is, how is that answering that? And are they getting it? And if it's at North Myanis, if it's at Glenville, if it's at Central, if it's at Eastern, how is it being addressed to each of those schools? And I think that would be very important. This is an additional $14 million. This is a gift that we are not going to get again. And we need to make sure that it is being accurately and adequately spent across the entire district to for all students that need the assistance after having experienced a two-year pandemic, wearing masks and not getting and being out of school for a period of time. And that's my concern here, and this doesn't do it for me. And I keep raising the frustration. And I keep raising the frustration, and I hope that some of Mike's comments resonate with others, that we can get further transparency into exactly what what this means and how it's going to be dispersed amongst all 15 schools in a sufficient manner so that myself and maybe others can get comfortable with how this is spent. Because I'm just not willing to say this makes sense, because to me, it doesn't make sense. I and and I will continue to vote no on this until we get further transparency, that we are responding to the asks of our community, that this money is going to the right place at the right time and the right schools. So that when we come back, that we have the answers to say, yes, we spent this appropriately, and it did its job. And I can't, I can't answer that question right now, so I cannot vote for that.
Okay, so in the interest of trying to find compromises, I often do. The a few things I wanted to get a step back on, because having been early on in this process and chairing the Budget Committee at the time, one of the things that I try to say over and over, our system, Greenwich Public Schools, got more money than anyone else because we were in school when other districts were not. We didn't realize at the time that we were going to be rewarded for that, but we were, and that's pretty cool. And I think that we should just do a little bit of a victory lap on that one, because we did the right thing and we got more money as a result. So that's number one. Number two, and Mike mentioned this, these have very, there are very strict guidelines around how this money is spent because it is coming from the Department of Education, which is why we're getting audited. And that's great, because I think there's nothing better than a third party coming in and telling you if you did everything right or did anything wrong. And I like Mike's point on that. As a result, I really do think that once we have the results of the audit, because it's ongoing, we should spend a lot of time on it and sit here and have it on the agenda. I don't know if we need to make it a special meeting like Central Middle School, but I think we can add it to an agenda. So I think there's some really good ideas here. And I know that the administration is constantly trying to be as transparent as possible. These numbers kind of do it for me. Frankly, once I get to 3,000, I'm sort of not listening anymore. But Joe, go ahead.
I think that what you were just drifting into is what I'd like to mention. I do believe there is some certain number that we probably have to have some governing over, some 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 decision making as a board. Now, you just mentioned 3,000 and drifted off. Well, that's certainly a number that we don't want to bring before the board to make a decision on spending. But there is, there probably is a number, and we should decide where we should draw that line, because some might want to micromanage and work on small and smaller numbers. Some might want to just go with really big numbers. So I think we should actually make a decision. It is a lot of money, and if we're going to spend a significant one time expenditure or some category that has a number that has an amount that's quite large, then it should come before us. So we have to find out what that number is. That's my suggestion.
Why don't you guys take this up at the Budget Committee? Because that seems like a good conversation to have there.
Okay, just added my first agenda item.
Exactly. And then we can talk, and then I think it's obvious that once, one is the audit, it's ongoing right now, Sean?
No, it hasn't started yet.
It starts in May? That's what? Got it. So it's something that you'll have, in theory, by end of the end of the school year. Always the federal government. Well, we're getting good at summer meetings, so there you go. It's not exactly. We'll have a bet, over or under on deep. Okay, sounds good. So I think there's an action item on the table. It's to authorize the financial report for a period ended March 31, 2022. All in favor? Three, four, five, that passes 5-3.
Can I just ask a question, point of order? Like, why do we even have to authorize or vote on it? To be honest with you, this is a, right? I mean, seriously, right? I mean, you're laughing at me. Like, as a matter of procedure, it doesn't seem to me that it's something we even need to be voting on. Like, we don't vote on when we get an academic report. So why are we voting on a financial report?
You make such a good point, and I looked into it, and it's just because it's like one of those, we always did it, and it's totally not necessary. Because it's like a treasurer's report. Why are you voting? Like, thank you for the information. Why do you have to affirm, thank you for the information?
Maybe we rethink that.
I think we should probably just put it as part of information. Only problem with that is that then Sean gets to go earlier. And I'm not sure that's appropriate.
I don't think we're required to have our action item. I think I think the agenda can be structured the way in any fashion. It doesn't have to be discussion and then action. If you look at, it looks at an apollo scale. I don't have the number handy, but.
All right, sounds good.
My question is, what if this does not pass? What happens?
Nothing.
So we could not vote on it, we could vote on it, we could say, it doesn't make a difference, it all continues anyway.
Correct.
So there's some people voting in favor of it, some people not. I don't understand why some people are voting favorite and some people are not. I'm still confused on that point.
I think, yeah.
Have you seen Animal House, Joe? This this calls for a stupid and futile gesture.
Exactly. Oh, sorry. Okay, so would you like to change the vote? 5-2-1. Very good.
I'm going to change mine. I'm going to abstain as well.
I don't even know if this is allowed.
Yeah, I'm not sure we can undo a vote once a vote's been taken.
Okay, let's redo the vote. I didn't see the hands well, clearly. Okay, so the motion on the table is authorize the financial report for the period ended. All those in favor? One, two, three, four. All of those opposed? Two. All of those abstaining? Two. 4-2-2. Thank you. Okay, let's move to agenda planning. Ms. Hirsch.
I know that we were supposed to have a an update or presentation or, you know, the year end report from CAC. And that was moved, but I don't see it added back on here anywhere. So I just wanted to point that out, whether we actually have a date from them as to when they think they can have it or not. But I want to make sure that we include that.
Very good. They said next month, I just heard. Central meeting, that's what we really need to focus on here. Is it possible that we could have it before May 19?
I think we have to.
Yeah.
Because our next meeting is, well, that's a retreat, would be June 16. And I think we need to have the ed specs, I think we need to have the ed specs voted on by by at least May 19, or we're going to have a whole host of additional meetings, because I don't think you can, I think you have to have it done before our last meeting.
Wait, I don't, I think we could vote on May 19 on the ed specs, Karen. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Vote on May 19.
Vote on May 19, but that we have to have at least one and potentially to make sure we're all comfortable, possibly two meetings before then, depending upon the presentation and the discussion item.
Right, and that's because the, for the timeline purposes, we need to have it approved by the end of June. Is that for funding?
For the Building Committee, because they have no work to do if we don't give them ed specs.
But but that, and that's the, that's the, that's the deadline, though. It's not as far as meaning state funding.
We're not, we're not applying for, in order to apply for the state funding, we would have had to have the appropriation voted on by the Board of Estment Taxation and the RTM before June 30, which is not going to happen, because we don't have a number. So, right, right? So it's so, but it's for the Building Committee, and if you read what a building committee, they need their charge in order to properly be formed. And if they don't have ed specs, they have really have not no charge.
Okay, so let's look at the calendars for.
I might as just not next week with all our RTM meetings is not really an option. Chair Stowe.
That's a very good point. Yes, those are a lot of meetings. And I don't want to do anything on Cinco de Mayo anyway. Okay.
We we have RTM meetings on Cinco de Mayo.
Seriously. Okay. How about May, well, May 12 is a Central Middle School concert, so I'll be here. You guys want to do a post concert? There'll be a lot of parents.
Can we do pre concert?
Let's do a pre concert. There'll be a lot of Central Middle School parents. Thursday, May 12. The concert's at 7. You have to drop your child off at 6:30.
We can meet at 5.
You don't think they could manage that? No, but I was thinking for the central parents, right?
I I think it's also difficult to, or we shouldn't be making the assumption that parents can come any earlier based upon working schedules, and because the world has now targeted to right itself, there's a lot more city commuters than there once was.
Well, and I was going to say, if you do it after, parents are going to be here with their students. You need to get them home.
There's no way.
That's too late to start.
That's ice cream time.
Well, is there, is there a possibility, okay, I'm Ms. Dr. Jones, that at least the first presentation, if it's going to, if we get documentation in advance that we can review, and then we get a presentation by them and we can ask questions, perhaps it would not be an extraordinarily long meeting if we find that week's more problematic. I'm just, I'm trying to kind of think of ideas.
I, I think I understand your question, but I do think it'll be kind of a long meeting in the sense that I, knowing this board, I do believe you'll have a bunch of questions.
Well, it doesn't have to be on a Thursday, correct? Could you do it on May 11?
It's a good point.
Can we do it? I have, I have an obligation that evening, but I would prefer not to have to change if we could do it on the earlier side.
I actually have something that evening as well.
Okay, next. Different. How about Tuesday, the 10?
I'm out. I could do remote, but I can't get back in time.
Did you just say Saturday? Dr. Jones.
What says Mother's Day, like a Board of Ed meeting? I'm just kidding. You know, I'm just kidding.
Tuesday, May 10, but Karen couldn't do it, right? You could only do it virtually.
What time?
Bye, Chuck. Bye, Lil.
Bye, thank you. Thanks for hanging.
What time? Sorry, what time on the 10?
I have something to get out of, so I'll try to do that, but I think I can do that. Or we, or is later better, Karen?
Later is much better.
We do have to check with the consultants, too, but if the eight of us could do it, let's focus on that.
But the question is, are we going to have our, I think this is a strategy, are we having public comment at the first time we're seeing this or at our, right, so it's, it's really the public comment would be on the May 19 meeting, correct?
This is really for us to talk to the consultant. I mean, it'll be public, obviously, because we're together, but.
Well, it'll be the first time we and the public have an opportunity to see what was what they've gathered, and as Joe's good point was, to see what they didn't include. And for us to ask those questions, and then it gives the public an opportunity to marinate and be able to share their feedback and thoughts as well. I won't be here for the May 19 meeting, but I'll watch the video afterwards.
So do we want to say 7:00 PM on May 10? Was that where we were? Yes. And you said you could do that virtually?
I could try to be here on time. It just depends on how late my thing runs in the city as to what train I can get on and when I can get here.
Do you want to try 7:30?
That would give me a little bit more time, yeah.
Okay, that's fine with me. Everyone cool with that? Let's go firm. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, again, I assume it's if the, they can, you know, be here, the consultants, right?
Right, that it's based on them coming. Otherwise, we could all just stare at each other. That'd be fine. God bless you. All right, May 10, 7:30.
I think we also should just be forewarned that maybe we might have to meet at COSCOP, because our TM meeting the night before is the budget. If they run long, they can might co a second night, so we should have a backup location. Just food for thought.
What else? Okay.
Another agenda item?
Yes.
Parks and Rec, Joe Siss.
Oh, yes, let's do that. Okay, we can have that for just our ongoing relationship.
Well, really, it's about the, I know that I've been made the liaison at Parks and Rec, and all they do is invite you to the meeting and sit you in an unescalated position, and you listen to them talk. And they kind of do stuff for us that we kind of don't really oversee. They, Joe Siciliano reports to Fred, doesn't report, nobody really seems to report to us on this topic, and there's a bunch of different schools that they service. I'd like to know how the schools feel about the service that Parks and Rec provides them, each and every school, and then be able to present that to the Director of Parks and Recreation, Joe Siciliano, when he comes here and tell him how the he get rated on his services provided to the, to the, well, 16 buildings. So that's what I'd like to do, Joe.
Are you guys really good friends?
You know, he's got to do what he's got to do.
That's fine. I remember doing that with Ralph a couple of years ago, and it was a good meeting. So yes, let's, let's do that.
Say that this is a topic that comes up often. I think it's also a good idea. I know the schools constantly get frustrated, because we cover some stuff, the town covers some stuff, they never know where they're supposed to go to ask for, you know, interior, exterior, you know.
Well, yeah, so when we decide and prep for that, Tony, if you could jot that down, just if we could find out from the schools if they're satisfied with the service that Parks and Rec provides them. Give it a scale of 1 to 5, and 1 being good, 5 being horrible, or something like that, or whatever you choose to do. And at least we can then present that to Joe about how we feel. I don't know if we have a say in the matter of how he services our buildings, and I think we certainly should.
Very good. Okay, that's good. And then obviously, the French book will come back, and so we should all watch the video. And then Western Middle School will be added to every meeting.
And then I think that Karen and I have been sitting on the curriculum committee as it's reviewing the proposed curriculum for the African American and Latino Studies class. And I, off the top of my head, I don't remember the last date of the meeting that we have. But I do think that that has to come back to the board for a vote.
I think we already voted. We just referred it. I don't think we said it had to come back. I mean.
We 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 voted, we said that it had to come back. Well, we said that it could go on to the the school book, sorry, lacking the words at this time of night.
Course study guide.
The course study guide, and that it had to be gone through the curriculum committee. But pursuant to policy, I believe that has to come back to us for a vote.
I don't think we said, we said we referred it to the curriculum committee to review, but I don't think we said we needed it to come back.
But our policy says it has, we have to vote on the curriculum.
Yeah, let's look into it. That's. The district, yeah, that's kind of how I saw it, but we can continue to have that conversation. Go ahead, Michael.
It's almost comical, but we did talk about going back in executive session to review the high school plans from the incident and how they've adjusted.
And I know you followed up with Chief Hebe, and I feel like he's my new Waldo. I feel like I see him everywhere. So I should probably have asked him the last few times, but I will again. Good reminder. Okay, with that, anyone want to make a motion? Oh, Ms. Koston.
From my basement, I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Very good. All in favor? 8-0. Thank you so much. Thanks for staying with us.